All right, so I'm going to pull this meeting in order. Since we have a roll call here, Mrs. Santiago, could you please call the roll?
Craig Stalling.
Here.
Cyprian Glendo. Julio Flores.
Here.
Karen Taylor. Richard Waring.
Here.
Michael Bresch.
Here.
Juan Min.
Here.
Robert Cotto.
Here.
Yamal Alba.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. All right, business agenda. I have a number three.
Move the adoption of 2017-2018 general budget. You have a 417, 933, 487.
So move the second. Does move the second, Madam Superintendent?
Right, I'm actually going to begin by asking our chief finance officer to frame the conversation. And Paul, if you can give a review of the dialogue and the presentation from our finance committee meeting.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. So we started the finance committee just with a quick overview of where this budget is as of today. So in the presentation, if you recall, the superintendent had presented her recommended budget back on April 18th. We had a general fund recommended budget of $287 million, which represented a $3 million increase over the 2016-17 budget, and a special funds budget of $133.9 million, which represented a $12.6 million or just about a 9% reduction over the 2016-17 special funds budget. The total recommended budget was $420.9 million, which represented a $9.6 million decrease or 2.2% over the 16-17 budget. If you recall that we had a number of cost increases that we faced every year. So when we projected out all of the cost increases, we had about $13.6 million in increasing costs to incorporate into the 17-18 budget before we began the adoption or development. And then we had decreasing revenue of the $12.6 million projected left us with a pretty significant budget gap of $26.2 million. And one of the important reasons why we asked for an increase in the City of Hartford appropriation. We did close, as part of our development process, $23.2 million of the $26 million gap that existed. And on page four in your deck, yeah, this is from the original presentation as well, you can see the significance of the categories where we were able to mitigate that, including the reduction of 81.6 positions that were part of the superintendent's recommended budget for salary savings of 6.2 and many, many other different categories of just reductions to come to that $23.2 million in overall reductions as part of the budget. So as we move forward, the City of Hartford has adopted their budget. The City of Hartford adopted a budget on May 17th. And unfortunately, they have flat funded education for what will be a ninth consecutive year. This has resulted in a $3 million gap in our revenues and will result in additional reductions necessary to balance this budget. We also receive a substantial aid from the state of Connecticut. About 70% of our overall revenue comes from the state of Connecticut. We had hoped the state of Connecticut would have a budget passed by the end of their session, which was Wednesday, the 7th. Unfortunately, that did not happen. So there's a significant uncertainty in what our anticipated aid will be from the state of Connecticut at this particular point. We are hopeful, however, that the state of Connecticut might be able to get a budget passed by June 30th. And we'll have to determine what that aid package looks like for education. There have been a number of proposals, as you probably are well aware, that have been batted back and forth in regards to what kind of education aid we would be looking at, anywhere from, you know, a flat to upwards of $46 million. So there are, again, significant proposals. And what ultimately will pass will probably be a series of negotiations on what that final aid package will look like. So, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, so where we are today, I have adjusted the general fund revenue to reflect that reduction of 3 million. And the total amended general fund budget is $284 million. And the special funds is $133.9. We're going to move to slide or page six in your presentation, which is, you know, also what we discussed at the finance committee meeting on Tuesday. So the total budget amend is $417.9 million, representing a 12.6 or 2.9 decrease to the total budget compared to last year. And to summarize that, the school-based budget meetings that attend, that were attended by the finance chair and some of you, increased the investment of $1.02 million that is going back directly to schools. And the co-location of both Weaver Culinary Academy and Journalism and Media Academy, which the co-location begins next year, will allow us to share some of the resources with a reduction in $514,000 and close to a 17% of the revenue gap. At central office and the services at central office, I've realigned the offices at central office, allowing us to absorb $1.04 million or 33% of the revenue gap. And that new structure will improve our coherence and our effectiveness as a central office to support our schools. And the funding reserve that we initially had in the mandatory compensatory line for the Office of the Child Advocate related report has been decreased by $500,000, still leaving us with a million and a half Paula in that line. I spoke last time of the fact that we know that we were in the process of an assessment, a comprehensive assessment with working with the Center for Children with Special Needs. That report should be sent to us, the assessment, if you will, detailing the work ahead. And the initial estimate that was provided to us was about half a million dollars. And so making sure that we protect those funds. And so while, you know, the changes above are significant in trying to mitigate that additional 3 million, it still doesn't close the full gap. We, given, you know, the unprecedented and even uncertain times that we're still facing with the state and our city finances, we are going to have a placeholder credit for $1.97 million in contingency pending the adoption of the state budget and/or the identification of additional funds or necessary reductions later on as well. So that's just a summary. If you need a detailed overview of the realignment at central office, I can speak to that. I just want to make sure that, as I mentioned Tuesday night to you, that, you know, the realignment at central office was already going to take place in connection with our focus around the realignment and redesign of the district. We know that one of our strategies moving forward is going to be around the middle school programming and designing programs, middle school programs. And so having to align the central office offices, if you will, from a pre-K to grade eight and then a office of the secondary grade levels, with the Office of Academics and serving as a central support to both offices, which means that the school, the Office of School Improvement has been eliminated. However, those positions have been shifted, if you will, to the Office of Elementary and Middle School Programs and the Office of Secondary Programs. So that, you know, instead of having all 48 schools being grouped into a cohort of pre-K to 12, now the focus is going to be on grade level bands, if you will. And so those schools will be able to not only be supported by grade level, but the principals as well. And they'll have a network that are grade alike, if you will. So that's in a nutshell, the realignment. And so the biggest mitigation in terms of the 3 million, again, the co-location of the two schools, the central office alignment and the funding of the, decreasing the compensatory OCA line by 500 and the 1.9 contingency pending the adoption.
Okay. Are you fine? So if you're done with that, so I'll just, I'll open it up to the board. Is there?
It was my motion. So I'd like to clarify what it is I think we're voting on, which is this resolution, which will expend money in accordance with the proposed budget, subject to the adjustments that are on the sheet, which have actually been distributed in detail, I believe, by the members of the board. So that's actually, just so we know what it is we're voting on. I'm not expecting by way of clarification.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any questions?
I have a specific question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rush.
Relative to the expenditures or staff, staff reduction, I saw something like 81 positions.
Yes.
Could you break that down in terms of administration and classroom teachers?
So principals, assistant principals, three. Deans, one. Teachers, 30. Instructional coaches, seven. We did increase social workers. This was at the beginning, the initial presentation and proposal that I did, the increase of 6.5 social workers, addition of three guidance counselors, two paraprofessionals. And then at central office, there was a total of 23 positions. Now that has increased to 28 positions being reduced at central office.
23 positions at central office?
I can, yes.
28.
28.
28.
Yes, so I have, I asked Natasha to join us because, you know, that number, that 81 number.
Yes.
That we initially proposed specifically as it relates to teachers' shifts. And so Natasha, can you just give us a pulse check as to where we are, given the fluctuation?
As of today, we have 41 actual reductions enforced. So due to resignations and retirements, we were able to bring back some folks and we do that on a daily basis. So we take an assessment of what positions we have available and what resignations and retirements we have. So right now, we have five teachers that are reduced in force and we are looking to bring those people back. We actually have one that's coming back very shortly.
So just to clarify, from the 30.
Yes.
We are at four, five teachers.
Five. Four in a few moments because we will be bringing one back, a health teacher.
These are tenured teachers?
Two of them.
Two of the tenured?
More tenured teachers.
Well, I mean, why?
That we're looking to bring back.
Why tenured teachers when you have other places to cut? That are, you know, I mean, a tenured teacher's been there for a while. He got his, he's approved by us by keeping him. Now we're going to let him go?
So I can speak to.
You can't find two positions that, or, you know, that can take his place or their place, rather?
The reductions actually happen in the areas of their certification. So as we look at who needs to be placed, we also have to look at what kinds of certifications they have. So unfortunately, in this particular area, it's physical education and we did not have positions for physical education teachers and nor did we have for health. Typically, they are certified for phys ed and for health, but both of those positions, we had to do reductions.
I'm talking about reducing, reducing the, let's say, the central office staff or even the administrative staff, taking that sum and keeping the two teachers. Or again, tenured teachers, I think, deserve a lot more than being let go on that basis when there are, there must be places that you can cut in terms of some positions that are redundant in the office.
I also want to remind us that the, some of the cuts were also in relation to the class size, right? And the reduction in enrollment in some of the schools. And so while I don't want to, this is not a performance issue, right? We value our teachers and we want to really make sure that we retain as many as possible. But I, but I do understand your concern, Mike, in relation to the fact that these are effective teachers and they're tenured teachers that we want to make sure we retain.
And our anticipation actually is that we will receive more resignations and retirements and likely do in the month of July, actually.
Yeah, okay. But we're voting now.
Bring them back. Yes, I understand that.
So two teachers will be told that they're not coming back, all right?
Yes, they have already.
And yet we're adding some people who haven't even started yet.
But for, just want to clarify that Natasha, when someone is informed that they are going to be reduced per their bargaining rights, can you just kind of speak to that as too?
Yeah, so in the HFT for their bargaining rights, they have a 30-month recall. So we have three years to bring them back. And in fact, some of our counselors from last year that were laid off, two of them are coming back now because we have openings for them as the superintendent indicated. We were trying to increase in the school counseling and social work area to help support the schools. And so we will have two counselors come back.
Yeah, I understand that then. It's a three-year period.
Yes.
But there's also some tenured teacher might have to wait three years before he's, and then doesn't get a call anyway. Whereas again, from central office and from administration, when you tell me that you're putting in some new office, new positions and you have a tried, someone who's got tenure, that means he's already been tried and evaluated, you're giving one up on someone who's not even tested yet. So I just don't see where you can't move the, keep that person. And it's only two, not 20. That's the way I'm approaching it anyway, unless I'm wrong.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No worries. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Let's go.
It's my understanding that there was a process about schools being able to meet with the leadership team, the chair, the superintendent or the administration about restoring proposed cuts or kind of discussing, there were some kind of budget meetings with schools. Can you just talk about that process, about what that was about and what it looked like?
Well, full story. The finance committee wanted to have public hearings. Those public hearings were not scheduled in a adequate time to afford that particular process. So the superintendent allowed us to, those of us who wanted to sit in on budget meetings, to sit in on meetings with either her and the assistant superintendent or the assistant superintendent and principals. And at that meeting, it was not necessarily a meeting about restoring cuts as much as it was about evaluating the process, what we could do better, how we could give them more time to sort of debate the budget amongst themselves and provide a more fluid process. Because a lot of SGCs feel that they go through the budget process, they chime in, they give their opinion, but then they're discarded and not represented once the budget actually reaches central office and once it's voted on. So I wanted to allow anyone who wanted to participate in those meetings just to hear and sort of get a sense of what's going on in the ground. I thought it was a positive thing. Most principals were excited about the opportunity to talk candidly about what their concerns were. Most principals felt that this budget was not the ideal budget, but they felt confident that they could still perform their job at a high level. They talked about more supports from central office, more involvement from the board, more deliberate structure policies that will give them clarity to do their work. So it was more of, and actually it was more of, they had the opportunity to criticize us. So it was, it was positive in that sense. I took a lot of notes. And I hope we can figure out how to structure that again in a more positive, open, transparent way because it is very helpful. And I speak for myself, I left the way, I left encouraged by a lot of principals. I don't want to sing along, I don't mean to sing along to anyone, but the principal of Naylor, for example, Naylor School was awesome, was fantastic. They're, they're, they have a special, what is it?
In the overview?
The special, special program, the autism program, the autism program and things that they're doing there are fantastic. And so we have a lot of positive things going on in the district that did not get a lot of attention. There are a lot of principals who are doing a lot of positive things and we just want to support them and we need to support them also.
Quickly, I wasn't at those hearings just because it was during the workday and, you know, I can't commute back and forth as much as I want to. But based on those meetings, there was an additional $1.02 million put back into the schools based on those meetings.
Yeah, and that's a balance. That was, that was challenging, given that, right, so it's our 47, 48 programs and, you know, they're back, you know, after having their initial meeting with their assistant superintendent in their schools and kind of building their budget with their SGCs. And it's still hard to say, you know, the budget is the budget, you know, we're constrained in, if you will, in terms of the amount of funding that we have and the uncertainty in the funding that we have. So still many people walked away, right? Many schools.
Of course.
Walked away with knowing the challenge in which we're in and not being able really to fund beyond the basics and not having funds for, you know, additional strategies. I still speak about the fact that our neighborhood high schools, right, do not have an acceleration agenda. And so, you know, while, while, you know, Robert, you know, it was great to engage and we'd be here, again, the needs of the schools, right, were very, very limited.
Now, let me just add to that by saying first, the criteria and the compromise was clear. We could not promise anything. So we were not there to promise that we would restore cuts. We were there to ask our questions about our process. And so if those, some of those positions or some of those things that they worked out with the principals, worked out with the finance department, and we were on a seriously tight, tight, tight leash, and they had a bell. So if I or any other person asked a question out of bounds, they shut that down. So, but it was, it was a positive thing. And then the last thing I would say is, it helped, for me, it helped. It gave perspective. When we hear bare-bones budgets, it rings home. It rings true. And schools really can't afford to be bare bones. That's not how we should operate. That's not the priority that we should set. And so it was, like I said, it's something that I think we should continue to do. It's a wonderful dialogue. I, and I encourage every member to, in some way, some shape or form, if you have a committee, to invite principals and community leaders, I call them community leaders, to your committees because they are willing to work, they're ready to work, and they want to be a part of what we do. So with that said, is there any other question or debate?
I just have another question, just about, I have a comment, but I'll say that if you want. Just a question about the state's budget situation. So state obviously is facing similar pressures as the city. And at some point this summer, we don't know when exactly, but they will, they will come and say, you know, here's the, here's the allotment, the appropriation for the Hartford school system. So like, I guess it's more of a procedural question. Will we have to, like, reconvene at some point to kind of take a look at what the state appropriates for Hartford educational cost sharing grants and other grants? So that's the first question. And then secondly, you know, so will reconvene, is there a possibility that some of these things might be restored depending on, you know, what the, you know, what the state appropriates Hartford? So it's like a two-part question.
Yes.
Good question.
So definitely, you know, priority around the OCA work, given that that's connected to the culture change and our processes and protocols around student safety. And Paula, to your, to the question around procedures, certainly coming back, but timeline, I mean.
Yeah, so definitely we will address it. You know, the timeline is going to be vague because it's going to be depending on when the state does act on that. But we hope they're going to act sooner rather than later so we can make some informed decisions hopefully before school opens. And depending on what we hear, you know, whether it's additional aid that we might be getting or I hope it's not, you know, another worst-case scenario, we're going to have to make some choices around that. So if it's an increase in aid, certainly we'll prioritize what we get and what we think we want to reinvest in to put some of that money back into some of the areas that we know that we haven't been able to really significantly make an impact on. And if there's additional reductions, then we'll certainly have to mitigate those and have a plan to come back to you all and have you re-amend the budget is what the process will be.
Okay. I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman, but I have a comment. But I will wait unless there's other questions that people want to raise, then I can.
Any other questions? So, okay, Coach has a comment now.
Yeah, yeah, just a, just a comment, just generally. I mean, you know, this is my eighth budget, I guess, and I think almost all the budgets we've cut something, I think. I can't remember a budget where we had more. But my memory is foggy because of late nights with an infant. So that's, you know. But I think, you know, I want to just commend the superintendent and her administration in trying their best to, you know, to reduce costs in areas that aren't going to directly impact the schools and classrooms. This, I'm not saying this stuff doesn't impact classrooms and schools, but you're trying to work around the edges to some extent and, you know, reconfigure things in central office. So I just want to commend, you know, your team for doing that and with the caveat that it's not, you know, it's not, not a neutral sort of thing to make cuts, but it's, I understand the position that we're in. So just, and also want to commend the leadership team, Craig, the chair, in leading some of these meetings and trying to kind of work with people in the community, principals and so on and so forth, to just have a conversation with people about the budget. So I think that's, that's helpful. And, you know, besides that, I don't really have a whole lot to say. Just, you know, I think, I think this is probably the best that we could do at the current moment. So, thank you.
Is it possible to, and I know that this is going to be kind of fluid, but once we've made the staff reductions to kind of get a breakdown of the positions that were reduced and hopefully to be brought back?
And I can add that to my ongoing reports to the board. Just Natasha and I kind of have a pulse check every, every week.
Perfect.
As to those numbers.
And so I'll just make my little comment and I'll say, I want to thank everyone, Madam Superintendent, for inviting us to sit with your assistant troops on those meetings. I am encouraged by the principals that I talk with. They are strong, bold and committed. And I feel that we should follow their example and support them and support the teachers in what they're going to do. They realize this is not the ideal budget, but they are committed to doing the work. And that's testament to you and your leadership. So I'm excited about that. I do feel that we can be a phoenix rising from the ashes. I do believe that we can begin to crawl out of the hole that we're in. I believe that we do have committed professionals who are ready to accept the challenge. I was encouraged by a lot of the schools. Sanchez, ELM, they, they were inspiring to me. I would like to see some uniformity in the city and I'm sure we'll get that. So I'm encouraged about the work that's coming. And I just ask everyone, remember that the hard work begins tomorrow. We expect everyone, all hands on deck, to move in one direction. We are one, one district and we're going to move for one resolve, which is to provide quality education for our children regardless of where they are, where they come from, who they are. And we need to support our children in school and outside of school. So we need to organize our kids. So we need to organize our community and continue to push forward, continue to communicate, continue to engage and continue to inspire not just the teachers, I mean, excuse me, not just our children, but the teachers and the principals because they're in it together. And if our kids come to school in crisis, then our teachers end up in crisis and our principals end up in crisis and we need to support them. So with that said, is there any other comments other than?
I have a comment.
Sure.
I'm fully in support of all you've said, completely. Now, I understand the budget is difficult and the times are difficult. However, I find it very difficult for me to vote for a budget that removes or takes away, having been a tenured teacher myself, that I would be voting for something that would eliminate tenured teachers. And it would seem to be, I hate to use the word hypocritical, but it, to me, it puts me on a somewhat of a dilemma. But I, I, until I can find, until they can put those teachers back in, then I would think I'd have to vote no on this kind of, on the budget that might be presented. And recognizing all the hard work, I'm not criticizing it. And I'm not saying that it was not a good budget, that this is what we have, but I felt that I'm in a position to morally uphold my feelings about those who are in the front lines. Not, you know, you don't, you don't fire the soldiers and keep the generals, okay? So that's why I have to say.
Thank you. Sure, sure. Yeah, okay. All right, so all in favor of adopting, now let me just read it first, the Connecticut State General Statute CGS ten dash two-two-two requires that the appropriation of the general operating funds of the school district be approved by the Board of Education. The Harvard Board of Education adopts the fiscal year 2017-2018 general budget in the amount of four, four hundred seventeen million nine hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars effective July one, 2017. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion passed. And there's this one other order of business that is not on the agenda and so I know this is not standard, but I'm gonna do the point of order myself. You know I shouldn't. And we have had a former colleague pass away and a former colleague's significant other or spouse pass away recently and so I would like to offer Mr. Waring and Mr. Brusher an opportunity to talk about each of the particular people and then we, if we can have a moment of silence before we adjourn. So I don't know who wants to, Mr. Waring?
I think so. I think many of you know that Matt Pollen's spouse Jeff Capell passed away last week after a long battle with cancer. If you knew Jeff, he was a wonderful guy and he was just a great sense of humor and an excellent, excellent neighbor. And I know he was always very supportive of the work Matt tried to do here, even though it obviously impacted, you know, on their time together. He was, he was a young man, he was not even sixty years old. He was only about fifty-eight when he passed and I knew Jeff fairly well, obviously, as a neighbor and as Matt's son's spouse. And, you know, I, I think all of us who knew him and lived downtown are sad and, you know, I think we're the worst off for him no longer being with us. And I'll just quickly add, Mike's gonna speak to Felix Karski more, but I knew Felix as well and he was a wonderful man and who served his city in any number of capacities and I, I miss him dearly.
Well, Felix and I had been, besides being neighbors, teachers at Buckley High School for many, many years and friends for many, many years. After he retired, in fact, he was the faculty manager and I took over for the faculty manager at that time. He had a varied career. He started out at Holy Cross, ended up at Trinity, was a football star at Buckley High School. He was track, basketball, baseball, well-liked. He was on our Democratic Town Committee. He was a representative to the General Assembly and he was a trustee when the state had come out. And I met with him every day and he was very interested in what happened at the school, what's happening now and, you know, and went down to Florida and after a brief illness, he passed away and miss him very greatly. And I think we have all lost a friend of the Hartford Board of Education and a friend of Hartford.
All right, we can just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And so with that, I hereby adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.